Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Chair Serna.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, September 12th, at 6:00 PM on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during the Board of Supervisors meetings may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics related to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these open public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of the public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda and off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the agenda comments will take place at the conclusion of the time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's Board of Supervisors proceedings. Again, a friendly reminder, those that wish to address the Board in any matter on our published agenda, certainly welcome to do so. We ask that you please complete a speaker slip and hand it to our clerk's assistants located at the rear chambers. We will call you in the order that we received the speaker slips. We ask that you keep your testimony to two minutes or less. That way, everyone who wishes to address the Board has that opportunity to do so. So with that, Madam Clerk, our first item.
Item number one is public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda. I have not received any speaker requests.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item.
Our next item is a timed item that starts at 10:15.
Okay, why don't we go ahead then and consider consent?
So our consent items are items number six through 56. I do have clerk notes for item number 20, if I could read that into the record. It's to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 16.86 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Metro Air Park and wait full reading and continue this to September the 23rd of 2025 for adoption.
Okay, that concludes your comments and notes on consent matters.
I will go ahead and move items six through 56.
Okay.
If somebody wants to pull one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, before we do that, I would like for the record to register my extension on items 33, 34, and 35. And then I would like to offer some comments on item 20. Do we have any other members of the Board who wish to pull items for separate consideration and vote and/or comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and then read item 20 into the record.
So I've read, I just read item 20 into the record.
Okay.
And Chair, if we are going to abstain for items 33, 34, and 35, if we could do a separate vote for just those three, so if you want to provide your comments maybe, or do you want to do that now?
Okay, in the past, just so you're aware, we have gone ahead and taken the full vote on the suite of items and consent with just the clerk's note
Okay.
that I have abstained on those items, and that has sufficed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so item 20 again has been read into the record. My comments are as follows. I have been in close discussions with Mr. DeFonte as of late relative to the progress or lack thereof as it relates to the funding and advancement of a fire station for Metro Air Park. This is a public facility that obviously is critical to the success of the business park, and we, it's a good problem to have in terms of the fact that our build-out is proceeding, I think, ahead of schedule at Metro Air Park, and there's been a great deal of cooperation. And I think, looking back, we can all conclude that it's been a success to date over the last several years, thanks in large part to our community development team. And also, I'll give credit to our property owners and developers who we've been working hand in glove to see that that part of Sacramento County and our economic development objectives are, again, advancing. However, unlike roads, sewers, water conveyance, when it comes to fire life safety, there is going to be a point where we can no longer ignore the fact that we have to have a fire station out there so that lives and property aren't going to be compromised relative to response times. And so, I'm looking at Mr. DeFonte at this point. I want to make sure it's clear to especially the property owners group that there's going to be a point where we're going to have to really look hard at occupancy out there, and whether or not it makes sense to continue with permitting occupancy in various, for various activities, distribution or otherwise, without that necessary piece of infrastructure and activities and operations that come with that. So I just want to communicate very publicly and very clear, clearly to, again, especially the property owners. I don't want to see us get to that point. I don't want to have things coming to a screeching halt, but I'm certainly not willing to ignore the fact that we are going to have to have that facility in place and operable in the not-too-distant future. So hopefully, that message is going to register loud and clear with the powers that be on the other side of the table from us in terms of funding, in terms of who's doing what. And Mr. DeFonte, I hope you can please communicate that to the property owners group.
Will do.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Okay, we don't have any public speakers on consent, correct?
We do not.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And the consent count passes unanimously.
With Supervisor Serna abstaining on items.
Items 33, 34, and 35.
All right, very good. Okay, next item.
Again, so the next item is 10:15. If we could do boards and commissions nominations and appointments.
Let's do that.
Okay. So the clerk has continuing to September 23rd, 2025, Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. Also continuing to October 7th, Adult and Aging Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, the Local Child Care Planning and Development Council. Continuing to October the 21st, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Elk Grove Kasama Cemetery District, Gott Arnold Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, and the Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council. That brings us to the items for today. For the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Rodriguez, there is one District 4 nomination.
Right, please reappoint Arthur Prestapa.
Thank you. For the Carmichael Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Desmond, there's one District 3 nomination.
Please continue to September 23rd.
Thank you. For the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, for Supervisor Desmond, there's one District 3 nomination.
Please continue to September 23rd.
Thank you. For the Cemetery Advisory Commission, there is one District 1 appointment for Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to October 7th.
For Supervisor Rodriguez, there's one District 4 nomination.
Please continue to September 23rd.
And for Supervisor Hume, one.
I'll continue mine to 10:21, please.
Thank you. For the Children's Coalition, Chair Serna, there are 23 seats available that are just board appointments.
Okay, the chiefs are recommending the nomination of Liam Patton. And let's see here. Please continue the remainder to October 21st.
Thank you. For the Kasama area Community Planning Advisory Council, there are seven seats available. Two of those are District 4, Supervisor Rodriguez.
Please continue to September 23rd.
And Supervisor Hume.
Also continue to 10:21.
Okay. For the Disability Advisory Commission, Chair Serna, there's eight seats that are board appointments.
Chiefs are recommending the reappointment of Jean Lozano, and please continue the remainder to October 21st.
October the 21st?
Yes.
Thank you. For the Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, there are three District 3 nominations. Supervisor Desmond?
Please nominate Kevin Stagnaro and continue the remainder to September 23rd.
Thank you. For the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission, there are four District 1 nominations. Chair Serna?
District 1 would like to nominate Donald Scherschleit, Sarah Weber, Ryan Raftery, and Christian Jones. And please waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
And that does pass unanimously. Also, for the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Commission, Supervisor Desmond, you have one District 3 nomination.
Please nominate Rhea Dollywall and waive process.
Second.
Please vote.
And that does pass unanimously. And Supervisor Rodriguez, there's one nomination.
Please continue to September 23rd.
And Supervisor Hume?
I would like to continue mine to September 23rd, please.
Thank you so much. For the Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, there are, there are two seats available. There's a District 1 nomination, or District 3, I'm sorry. Supervisor Desmond?
Please continue to September 23rd.
Okay. And for Supervisor Rodriguez, there's one.
The same, please continue to September 23rd.
Okay. And for the Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Kennedy, there is one District 2 nomination.
Please reappoint Elle Bzoski and waive the process.
Second.
And that does pass unanimously.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I made a mistake. My nomination was for the Youth Advisory Board. Did you catch that, that I made that mistake? Need me to make that nomination again in response to that one?
So, just for, let the record reflect, so Rhea Dollywall.
Did you put a youth on the Behavioral Health Commission? What did you do?
So, so Rhea Dollywall is nominated to the Sacramento County.
Youth Advisory Board.
Youth Advisory Board, Health Youth Advisory Board, not.
Correct. Not the Behavioral Health Commission.
Perfect.
Sorry about that confusion.
Thank you.
Do we need a vote again?
I don't believe so. I think we're good with that one.
Sorry, Supervisor.
Okay. And the Sacramento Environmental Commission, there is one County of Sacramento appointee. Chair Serna?
Chiefs are recommending the reappointment of Jonathan Gage Marchini.
Thank you. And for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, there is one District 5 nomination, Supervisor Hume.
I'd like to continue that to October 7th, please.
And finally, for the Sheriff's Community Review Commission, there is one District 5 nomination.
Also continue that one to October 7th.
Perfect, thank you. That concludes our boards and commissions nominations and appointments.
All right. Very good, thank you. Let's see, are we, we're still early for time, right?
That is correct, Chair Serna.
Chair? Yes.
If I may, I'd just like to point out to Supervisor Kennedy, this job is much harder when you actually have the vote sheet in front of you.
Okay, then we will stand in recess until 10:00. Okay, I'd like to call back to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish a quorum?
Absolutely. Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right, so we are going to take care of a few things before we get to the balance of our agenda. The first thing we're going to do is address an error that I made earlier during nominations. It's been brought to my attention, Madam Clerk, that for the Children's Coalition, I missed the nomination of Sigrid Robson to the education seat, so I'd like the record to reflect that nomination, please.
Thank you.
Very good. And then in terms of agenda management, Madam Clerk, I think we wanted to hear from a couple of members of the public that arrived a little late for off-agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair. We have two members of the public that are here to speak. Off-agenda public comment for items number 67, I could read that into the record.
Please.
For item number 67, it's a receivemall item Sacramento County Department of Community Development, PLNR 2024-00188. It's the annual review and report to the Board of Supervisors on the Mosaic Law Congregation's yearly report for events held between April 26, 2023 to April 25, 2024. Our first speaker this morning is Jack Burrows.
Good morning.
No, no, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Uh...
Good morning.
Yes, now we can. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Jack Burrows. I live at 2249 Sierra Boulevard, Sacramento, California. I moved into that home back in 2010, and for the next three and a half years, Mosaic Law was a very good neighbor. There were no problems. But starting in 2014, there were a number of raucous events that were being held at the center. Jane Kristofferson and I brought it to the attention of Mosaic Law to no avail. And then all of Walnut View was very concerned about the problem. And it kind of lasted for the next six years. And then the supervisors, I believe, instituted an annual report that Mosaic Law would have to make. And actually, since then, Mosaic Law has been an excellent neighbor. We have had no problems with them. Basically, I've spoken to a number of people in Walnut View Estates. Nobody has been aware of any problems. So I'd just like to say, what you instituted, I hope is something that can be continued for quite some time, just to ensure that Mosaic Law continues to be a good neighbor. Do you have any questions of me?
I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Okay, thank you.
Jane Kristofferson?
Good morning, and thank you for hearing us. I'm a neighbor. My house has been there. I think it's one of the oldest now. It was built in 1950, and I've been there on and off, having inherited my parents' house. Anyway, the long and the short of it is, you'll, any of you who recognize me at all, I was the secretary for the, the community that had issues. But I also want to say again that Mosaic Law is very much behaving as a good neighbor, as one would expect of a house of worship. And we thank them very much and hope very much that it continues. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your patience. Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe we're going to move on to item 57.
Correct. Item 57 is county service area number one, Zone 1, public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Winding Ridge Ranch Retail Projects, APN 245-0011-018, 022, and 024.
It is our smileiest staff member in the entire organization.
Hello. Good morning, members of the Board. Don Pimentel with County Engineering. The Winding Ranch Retail Project is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Manzanita Avenue and Winding Way, and consists of the creation of six commercial parcels from the existing three, building a gas station with convenience store and car wash, three restaurants with drive-throughs, and two retail buildings, as well as any associated site improvements. The project was approved with a county plan amendment, rezone, tentative parcel map use permit, special development permit, and design review on April 20th of 2024. In response to the project's condition of approval required prior to the building permit issuance, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of the benefit category change process. In response to that request, a notice and Proposition 218 ballot was mailed to the property owner on July 25th, 2025. Two of the project's three existing parcels are currently in the safety light only category and are each assessed $2.56 annually. The third parcel is in the street safety light non-residential category and is assessed $2.56 plus $78.12 per year for the parcel's 300 feet of frontage. After the benefit category change, the enhanced street and safety light non-residential categories, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $1,461.06. This is for the project's combined 1,365 feet of frontage. If there are no questions from the Board, we recommend the Board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony, any objections and protests, and close the public hearing to then direct the board clerk to tabulate and the return protest ballots.
Very good. Any members of the Board have questions of staff? All right, if not, I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not.
I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to tabulate.
The first ballot that we received is from owner Papa Skate Way, parcel number 2450011-018 and 022, site address 4626 Manzanita Avenue, Winding Way, Carmichael, California, with a yes ballot. And the second ballots that we received is from Papa's, Arizona, parcel number 2450011025, site address 4450 Manzanita Avenue, Carmichael, California, 95608 with a yes vote.
Very good, thank you.
Yay, thank you. So since there is no majority protest, we request the Board to adopt the attached resolution to confirm the levy of increased service charges for the Winding Ranch Retail Project, and would like to read in the fill-ins for the resolution. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received two protest ballots totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the benefit category, and 0% were in opposition.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of staff? If not, entertain a motion. It's been moved in second, please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Very good, thank you. All right, item 58?
Item 58 is PLMP 2022-00105, Emerald Subdivision, a specific plan amendment, rezone, tentative subdivision map, and design review for a property located at 9924 Florin Road East of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community, applicant SACA Development, APN 0660100-005.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Serna, Board of Supervisors. My name's Emma Patton, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review, also joined today by Christopher Albert, Associate Planner, and the Project Manager for the Emerald Subdivision Project. Today, I'll be providing a brief presentation on the Emerald Project, walking you through the key components of the proposal, as well as staff's recommendation. So this slide shows the location of the project site within the North Vineyard Station specific plan. The Emerald Project is outlined in red. It's Site 20 on this exhibit. It's located near other subdivision maps, including the recently approved Shandon subdivision to the east, and the Florin 40 subdivision to the west. The applicant is requesting a specific plan amendment, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and a design review to demonstrate compliance with the countywide design guidelines. I'm going to go into some greater detail on each of these requests in slides to follow. So this slide shows the specific plan amendment. Currently, the residential portion of the site is designated for single-family residential with densities ranging from three to five dwelling units per acre. The applicant proposes to change a portion of the site to single-family residential four through seven and expand the park site. This change is intended to accommodate the increased density. The proposed rezone would also align with the zoning per these updated land use designations. Here we can see the proposed tentative subdivision map. The 41-acre site would be divided into 148 single-family lots, along with a school, park, landscape, and water quality lots. Notably, the park site would connect with the adjacent Florin 40 subdivision with a combined park acreage of about five acres. The school site located along that southern boundary would be dedicated to Elk Grove Unified School District. The project qualifies for a notice of exemption due to its consistency with the adopted specific plan. However, project-specific mitigation measures have been developed to address environmental impacts identified in the specific plan's EIR. The project has been reviewed by several advisory bodies. The Vineyard CPAC met on November 14th, 2024. Unfortunately, no members were present, so no vote was recorded. The DRAC reviewed the project on September 26, 2024, and found the project to be substantially compliant with the countywide design guidelines, recommending that the Board do the same. And the Planning Commission met on August 11th, 2025, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of these entitlements. Staff's review concluded that the project is consistent with the general plan and the specific plan policies, that the project would comply with applicable standards, and is conditioned to complete required improvements, including roadway and drainage improvements. And finally, the project was supported by both the Planning Commission and the DRAC. Based on this analysis, staff is recommending that the Board take the following actions: to recognize the project's exempt status under Seca Section 15182A; to adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program; to approve the special, the specific plan amendment; to approve the rezone; to approve the tentative subdivision map; and define the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Morning.
I just have a couple of questions. The first is just so I understand how you do an analysis from like a planning principle standpoint. Don't oppose going to higher density on a portion of the project, but in, you know, thinking about walkability, is it higher priority to have the denser land use near the major arterial, or would it be, make sense to have it nearer the school for the kids to walk, if you're going to have more kids potentially to walk to school?
The difference between a single-family three through five versus a four through seven is marginal.
Sure.
Certainly, if there was a bigger difference in terms of density, it might be something that we would look into. In this case, it wasn't something that we really considered.
Fair enough. And then the small parcel that's at the northeast part of the map, it looks like it's a non-participating parcel. Is that just a holdout?
Yes, that's correct.
And is the underlying zoning for, or the designation under that, a single-family residential as well?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, other questions by board members? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any? Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board on this matter?
We do not.
All right, very good. Bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'd move staff's recommendation.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
All right, and we are within seconds of our 10:15 item, so we're not going to recess. We're just going to wait for the clock to adjust here.
Item number two here is the presentation of a service award recognizing Jasmine Thurston for 25 years of county service.
Good morning, Chair Serna and Board of Supervisors. My name is Cressy Onetto. I'm an HR manager with the Department of Personnel Services. I'm honored to be here today to present Jasmine Thurston with a service award, recognizing her for 25 years of county service. Jasmine grew up in the Philippines and is the youngest of four children. In high school, she played varsity volleyball and was awarded a medal for Rookie of the Year. She's a self-taught dancer and landed a role in a Coca-Cola TV commercial and as a backup dancer for major entertainers in Manila.
Wow.
She obtained her bachelor's degree in communications in the Philippines in 1991 and migrated to the U.S. shortly thereafter. She moved to Sacramento in 1999 and was hired with the county as an office assistant with the Department of Health and Human Services in 2000. In 2005, she was promoted to personnel technician within DHHS. In 2014, she transferred to the Employment Services Division in DPS, and that's when I had the pleasure of meeting Jasmine. Jasmine had made, has made significant contributions to the county, particularly improvements to the special skills exam process, and she is valued by her peers for experience, knowledge, and willingness to help others. In 2022, she achieved her registered yoga teacher certification and is a yoga teacher for Yoga Moves Us, a nonprofit organization in Sacramento. Jasmine loves being active, playing competitive tennis, she enjoys pickleball, hiking, and riding her bike, basically anything that promotes self-care, health, fitness, and overall well-being. She considers herself a food enthusiast and loves trying different cafes in Sacramento, different cafes and restaurants in the Sacramento area, and she enjoys visiting beach towns with her husband. It's been a joy working with Jasmine, and I congratulate her on her commitment to excellence in her work and 25 years of county service. Congratulations.
Thank you, Cressy.
You're welcome.
How do I go?
Before you begin, is that your water bottle? Can we move that? I'm sensitive to inappropriate props when it comes to photos here.
Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for allowing us this moment and for giving us a few minutes of your time. Thank you, Cressy, for presenting me this service award. I'm so grateful for this honor and recognition. 25 years seems really long, but believe me when I say it went by really fast. I also would like to thank my friends and colleagues for coming today. A special thanks to my friends who have since retired but came out today to celebrate this milestone with me. Last but not the least, I would like to thank my wonderful husband. Thank you for your unwavering love and for always supporting me in everything that I do. I humbly and proudly accept this service award. Again, thank you so much for this recognition.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Oh, Jasmine, don't leave yet. I just want to, I always love to take the opportunity to thank people who have given their heart and soul to any organization, but especially here at the county, whenever we have individuals that reach these milestones, it is a pleasure to say thank you for all your hard work and what you've given to the county that impacts our community, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're not leaving us anytime soon, right? Very good. All right. Very good. Well, again, I'd like to echo Vice Chair Rodriguez's comments, and, you know, we do these service awards fairly regularly here in chambers. We also do the occasional retirement recognition here as well. And it always amazes me how many committed public servants that we have in our organization that are here for two, three, and sometimes even four decades. And it really is impressive that you've, I think, attained a great work-life balance, as was kind of noted, in terms of your other passions, in terms of staying physically active. And being a foodie, by the way, you're going to want to stick around for a presentation here shortly, if you're so inclined, we'll have something for you. But again, I want to, on behalf of the board, just again, thank you for your two and a half decades of service here to Sacramento County. Thanks again.
You so much. Thank you.
Next item is item number three. It's the presentation of resolution of the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, proclaiming September 2025 as National Food Safety Month.
Jania, would you like me down there now?
If you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to invite you down, but this will save me.
All right, I'll make my way down. You can go ahead and start.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning, Chair Serna, members of the board. My name is Jania Monastario, and I'm the Director for the Environmental Management Department, also known as EMD. Joining me this morning is Rolando Villarreal, Division Chief for the Environmental Health Food Safety Program. First and foremost, I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to you, the board, for declaring September as National Food Safety Month, and also for recognizing the recipients of the 2024-2025 Food Safety Awards of Excellence. This award honors the exceptional efforts of food businesses, business owners and operators who consistently uphold exemplary food safety standards and practices. The continued success of reducing foodborne illnesses in Sacramento County is a direct result of the strong partnership and relationship between dedicated EMD staff and the restaurant community. Their collaborative efforts have helped ensure that Sacramento County remains below the statewide average for foodborne illness rates. This truly is a testament to the power of teamwork and a shared commitment to public health. Chair Serna, thank you for joining me down here at the podium to present the resolution recognizing September as National Food Safety Month.
Well, again, members of the board and members of the public that have joined us here in chambers this morning, this is something that we proudly do every year, and we take our cues from the National Restaurant Association. But I would say, more importantly, it's not just a celebration of local restaurants and the fact that they are not just providing great food for us here in Sacramento County, but they're doing it safely. And I know that we have one member of our esteemed board that is, in fact, herself a restaurant owner and can probably attest better than any of us what that actually means in terms of making sure that your cheese ice baths are at 41 degrees and all the other, all the other measures that it takes to make sure that we are keeping foodborne illness to a minimum here in Sacramento County. Each of us gets to go out in our respective districts each year with, with our EMD staff to help celebrate one particular restaurant each year that really exemplifies their commitment to food safety. I was able to do it at a local Mexican eatery in Natomas this year. Are we seeing a video as well? Yes. So in years past, we've done photos and had a bit of a slideshow. This year, we're going to witness a video. But again, I want to acknowledge ahead of time what we're going to see in the videos, or the video in terms of all the restaurateurs and the fact that they are rightfully acknowledged. But I also want to thank our EMD staff, who are not just out to play gotcha all the time. Certainly, there's a regulatory aspect to what they do that's very important, but they're also very committed to making sure that their relationships with those for whom they do regulate and do advance public health are also acknowledged in that partnership to make sure that we have a safe experience every time we go out to eat. So are we going to see the video now? Or do you want to?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, very good. Then I'm going to then present the resolution, and we're going to take the, of course, photos that we always need to do here. I'm not going to read all the whereas's or the resolve, but I think I've said plenty. This really captures a lot of that. And again, I want to thank EMD and the five recipients this year that we're going to see in the videos. Here, why don't you come this way? But someone more important than me in the middle. There you go. There you go.
All right, we're all excited about the video, so I'll go quick. So the next portion of the presentation here is to show a video, but also to set the stage for what Award of Excellence is. So each year, EMD reviews inspection reports, thousands of them, for all the retail food businesses across the entire county, and businesses that meet or exceed rigorous food safety standards are honored with the Award of Excellence. To qualify, a business must have no major violations and no more than two minor violations within the past year. So this year, we're proud to announce that there's 600 businesses that met this high standard. We commend these businesses for their unwavering dedication to food safety and thank EMD staff for their diligence and professionalism in supporting this achievement. So from the awardees, we have selected one outstanding business from each supervisory, supervisory district to be highlighted, and each board member, as Supervisor Serna has mentioned, has gone out and personally met with this business to offer congratulations and present their certificate. To further celebrate their accomplishments, we created a video montage showcasing these exemplary businesses, and this truly does represent the entire group of award recipients. I'd also like to thank the PIO Office for putting together this video. They did a fantastic job, and it's going to be super fun to watch. So with that, I'd like to introduce the video. Hi, my name is Jania Monastario, and I'm the Director for the Environmental Management Department. I'm super excited to be here today to present the 2024-2025 Awards of Excellence for Food Safety. Today, we'll be highlighting five facilities, food facilities in Sacramento County, one from each district. And this is just a sampling of the other 600 facilities who have also achieved this award. So enjoy the video and congratulations to all the winners.
Hello, and welcome to Cuatro Amigos here in Natomas, the Natomas part of Sacramento County. I'm Supervisor Phil Serna, and I'm pleased to be here with the honor Jose, to whom I just presented the 2425 Food Safety Award.
My name is Jose Castro Chavez, so I'm here at Cuatro Amigos, one of the, like, owner-operator. This award, I really appreciate that because, you know, we work, we work hard. So one thing for my experience is always keeping fresh, keeping clean, hand, hand washing, sanitation, and then, you know, cleanliness and go.
I can't tell you how excited I am to be celebrating Oto's Market today. This is really a tradition in Sacramento, South Sacramento in particular. If you look around Oto's Market, you'll see why. It just screams South Sacramento. Its ethnic diversity, the quality of food, the great people who operate it and shop here. Oto's is a wonderful part of District 2.
I'm Cheryl Inoue. I am one of the four siblings that currently co-own Oto's Marketplace, which was founded by our, our father, Ted Oto. And we are very, very honored and thrilled that the county has recognized Oto's Marketplace for the Award of Excellence, so thank you for that.
I'm Supervisor Rich Desmond, District 3, County Supervisor, and to celebrate September Food Safety Month, I am here at the Donut Stop on Hazel Avenue in Fair Oaks to honor May and Mike, the owners of this wonderful establishment, which you can just see by looking around, has excelled in terms of food safety and cleanliness and amazing donuts. And I picked one of these donuts to represent each one of the supervisors. So I'll start with Supervisor Rodriguez. For Supervisor Rodriguez, I'm bringing just a glazed donut. You know, that is really the powerhouse of donuts, right? It's the hardest-working donut in the donut family. It really, it's no frills, but it gets the job done, and it's really friendly to small business, by the way.
He was a CHP officer. He knows.
The second, for Supervisor Hume, I thought about this a while. I thought maybe a plain old-fashioned, you know, Supervisor Hume is a little old-fashioned, but he's not plain. So I decided instead to do an apple fritter, which is really, I think, commonly known as the farmer's donut. You know, Supervisor Hume represents the rural agricultural parts of the county, so I thought a, an apple fritter is appropriate for him. And so for Supervisor Kennedy, this is really an easy one. You know, he's a, he's a world traveler, travels to Europe a lot, he's a very urbane. So I had to pick kind of a cosmopolitan donut. So I decided on the French cooler for Supervisor Kennedy. I think that, that represents his, his style and his, his worldliness. And for Supervisor Serna, this was, I got a little tricky with this one. I picked a maple bar, and I think that Supervisor Serna probably won't eat it, but it's my favorite donut, so that means I'll be able to eat the maple bar.
And I congratulate Fat Rabbit for being awarded the Sacramento County Food Safety Award of Excellence. It is tough to run a business. It is uncomfortable to run a restaurant with so many regulations and so many expectations that they are running a business that meets the standards. So congratulations, Fat Rabbit, for winning this award.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I'm the bar manager here at Fat Rabbit, and this whole experience has been pretty cool. You know, you don't really think about food and safety when you're in this job because you just do it, it's part of it, you have a set of rules, you follow it, do the best you can, you keep at it, and everyone around me works hard, we all do our best, and it's really nice to get recognized, and hopefully we can do this again next year.
Hi, I'm Supervisor Pat Hume, and we're here celebrating Gaian Rice on achieving the Environmental Management Department Award of Excellence for Food Safety. This is not easy to get. It means that they take pride in what they're doing, and, you know, when you're running a small business, it's tough. And so to focus on the things that people can't see, such as keeping your kitchen clean and all of your food safe, it's important to do that, and they're doing it in a, in a way that makes them earn this award.
Hi, my name is Kate, and I am the owner of Gaian Rice, Thai Chicken Rice in Elk Grove, California. And thank you so much for this award. It means a lot for our small business, but actually, I want to thank to my team, the front of the house and back of the house, for helping us achieve this award. Without you guys, without the great team, I don't think we can succeed without you.
My name is Rolando Villarreal. I am the Division Chief of the Environmental Health Division. On behalf of the County Board of Supervisors and the Environmental Management Department, I would like to thank all the recipients and awardees for their dedication and commitment to food safety. Thank you.
I'd just like to note that Supervisor Desmond will be at Laffs Unlimited for, for the next week.
Tip your waitress.
Yeah, tip your waitress. All right. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Well, first of all, that was awesome. I really enjoyed the donut descriptions. But I just want to make a comment that, you know, I've been in business for 10 years, and, and running a restaurant really, truly is tough because there are so many regulations and so many things to do, and something might break down, and it kind of changes the way you have to operate your business. But one thing that I can say about Environmental Management Division is that you, you guys are super professional, and it really is about educating the public on food safety and protecting the public. And so I just personally want to take this opportunity to thank you for the exceptional work you do to help ensure that our restaurants are meeting those expectations that are, they are for a reason, and that is for the protection of the public. So thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
And I also want to pile on with my thanks. This was a lot of fun. Thanks for letting me riff a little bit, and I do have some donuts here from Donut Stop, including each of the donuts that was represented here. So, but you're right, I'm not going to eat the maple bar, so, yeah.
Your plan succeeded.
He probably already ate it.
All right, very good. Any last words?
Nope. Thank you very much, and congratulations to all the winners.
Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you, Janie.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number four is a presentation by Visit Sacramento recognizing 2025 Terra Madre Americas.
Morning, Crystal.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Crystal Bethke, Director of Economic Development here at Sacramento County. I have the pleasure of introducing Mike Testa this morning. He is the President and CEO of Visit Sacramento, also known as the Sacramento Convention and Visitors Bureau. Sacramento County has had a very longstanding relationship with Visit Sacramento to drive investment into our community. You know, they are our destination marketing organization here in Sacramento. And today, Mike is here to talk about an upcoming event, Terra Madre Americas, which is going to be taking place September 26th through the 28th. It's going to be a very exciting culinary and cultural experience. And so with that, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mike.
Good morning. Thank you, Crystal, for the nice introduction, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to present to you all. You've heard me talk at our State of Tourism event about the evolution of Sacramento's food scene, and Terra Madre Americas is really the exclamation point on that. Terra Madre Salon de Gusto has been an event in Italy that's been going for the last 20 years. It brings 300,000 people from 120 different countries to Torino, Italy. It has never been in the U.S. before. I had the opportunity to meet Paolo De Croci, who is the Executive Director of Slow Food International in 2018. And we started a conversation about bringing this event to the U.S. Obviously, the pandemic got in the way of our plans, but we maintained that conversation, and it will happen this year. And I want to give folks an idea of what slow food is because it's very well-known in Europe, but it's not very well-known in the U.S. And I think part of the opportunity with Terra Madre Americas is to adopt some of these programs. So the core pillars of slow food is good, clean, and fair food. And what that means, good refers to delicious, healthy, and culturally appropriate food. Clean emphasizes that food production should not harm the environment or animal welfare. And fair focuses on social equity, ensuring that producers receive fair pay and consumers have access to food at fair prices. So people ask me, what is Terra Madre? And it's hard to explain, but I'm going to give it a shot. Picture a big farmer's market, not with the traditional produce necessarily, but a lot of different food offerings. We'll have celebrity chef demonstrations. We'll have educational panels. It's really an all-encompassing weekend. And I think what is really exciting is we've taken our Farm to Fork Festival, which has been on Capitol Mall for the last 12 years, and we've moved it to the streets surrounding the Safe Credit Union Convention Center. So Terra Madre Americas will be inside of the convention center, and the Farm to Fork Festival will be on the outside of the convention center. So really combining two events and helping them to grow. I think I'm in charge here. I am in charge here. So this will give you an idea of what it is. We've got some great partners in UC Davis. The biggest and best ag school in the world is well-represented at Terra Madre Americas. We're working with different destination marketing organizations across California, including Explore Elk Grove, Visit Yolo, Placer Groan, to have representation here. We're working with the Wilton Rancheria and the 109 tribes across California. When you talk about the indigenous people of this land, it certainly is the Native American tribe. So they will have a big representation and a big footprint. Groups like Roots of Change, which talk about regenerative meats and sourcing in a good way. When you think about the largest agricultural product for Sacramento County, it is wine grapes. Bogle will have a huge representation of this event as well. And then outside organizations like Travel Oregon will be there. We've got some folks from Minneapolis, Minnesota coming into this event as well. A couple of the different experiences, we've got an Enoteca, which is essentially a big wine area. We've got 125 different wines from across the Americas that will be present at this event. A lot of different pieces from different parts of the world will be highlighted. And then we've got experiences. And I'll just read you a couple of these that I think are really interesting to folks. Coffee traditions from Brazil, Mexico, and Ecuador. Workers' rights in the California wine industry. A panel discussion with the Wilton Rancheria and some of the tribes. Healthy Meat for People: Palette and Planet, exploring food as medicine and nutrient density. Panel discussions with people like Alice Waters regarding school lunches. Exploring the Grains That Feed Us Across the Americas. And conversations like Access to Water, Land, and Seeds for Food Sovereignty. So really, a wide variety of programming there that we think people will find very interesting. Again, a lot of different aspects of this event. We've got three days, as Crystal said, from the 26th through the 28th of September. So a lot of programming throughout the convention center. And then we bring in celebrity chefs, big names like Alice Waters, Jeremiah Tower, Sean Sherman, who is part of the indigenous community in Minnesota. These folks come in, you know, a lot of times, we use celebrity chefs and big-name bands to attract people that may not understand what Terra Madre is, but sometimes the big name on the big hook gets some to come down, and we're confident, once they walk through, they'll have a great experience. We'll also have a pop-up bistro within Terra Madre Americas. Chefs like Jeremiah Tower will take a meal in that pop-up bistro to serve people. Lots of locals, too. Daryl Cordy, obviously, is a big name in food. He'll be part of the panel, working with the governor's office to hopefully bring the first partner in. And then Food Literacy, which is a local nonprofit group led by Amber Stott, that talks about making sure that kids have access to food. We've tried to create a fun atmosphere within the Safe Credit Union Convention Center. You can see kind of a raw footprint of what the map will be and how much programming will be inside of that building. Live music lineup with some pretty big bands. The War on Drugs received the Grammy for Best Rock Album in 2022. Interestingly enough, our partner, our mutual partner with Danny Wimmer Presents, who does Aftershock, Danny and his team booked these bands for us. So his reach extends past Discovery Park and, obviously, helping with a big event like this, too. We've done, tried to create a fun vibe inside the building when people walk around, make some navigational signs easy so people know where they're going. And we've also done a lot of advertising in the Bay Area. You can see these on freeway billboards. They're on the sides of buildings in San Francisco. They're at Bart stations across the Bay Area. So, you know, our job as Visit Sacramento is to get people to come into Sacramento, stay in the city and the county hotels, drive TOT, spend their money with our local businesses, and then return to wherever they came from and hopefully come back the next year to do that. So we think we're in a good place to do that with this event. I think what I'm most excited about with Terra Madre Americas, it will be in Italy in the even years. It will be in Sacramento in the odd years. This is the only city in the United States that will host this event. And I will tell you that, you know, in working with some of our friends in Portland and San Francisco and different cities, they would much prefer that this event is going to their city. So it's a bit of a coup that we got it in Sacramento. Not only do we have it for 2027, we signed a 10-year deal with Slow Food International. So we will have this for the foreseeable future. And last thing, I just wanted to thank the folks at Sacramento County. The county executive has been very supportive of this. Crystal serves on our Board of Directors. The whole county has been very encouraging for us to produce this event. So I just appreciate the partnership you guys have with us and Visit Sacramento. You do a lot for us, and we appreciate you having our back on big events like this. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I know that many of us were attending the, was it the 12th Annual Bridge Dinner?
Yeah.
Just this past Sunday on our beautiful Tower Bridge that spans the Sacramento River between Yolo County and Sacramento County and the cities of Sacramento and West Sacramento. Some of us are actually working there. And it was, again, just another reminder that we here in Sacramento really take to heart and sincerely celebrate, at every chance we can, our history, culture, and connection to food. I know we sit here in the heart of downtown Sacramento, the most kind of urban, densely populated portion of our region, but it doesn't take long before you witness just how surrounded and close we continue to be to our agricultural heritage and roots. The fact that this is the only event of its kind in the United States branded as Terra Madre, and the only other one is in Italy, that is remarkable. And, Crystal, I want to, where'd she go? There she is. I just want to thank her for her service on your board. She's a wonderful asset here in Sacramento County when it comes to working closely with Visit Sacramento and other partner organizations to, again, celebrate what we're good at, what we're proud of, all the partners that make things like the Tower Bridge Dinner and our farmer's market. And now, I'm sure it's going to be a success, Terra Madre. And I was there when you did the launch and you announced it, Mike, and really was very excited. I wear my t-shirt proudly, my green t-shirt. We're all looking forward to this. And I know my colleagues here probably want to offer some other comments, but again, this is just testament, again, to the great job that you and your staff continue to do and your leadership. So I just want to offer my sincere thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Mike, congratulations on another great dinner the other night.
Thank you.
I can't tell you how excited I am for this event. And, you know, I've been talking with Patrick Mulvaney about it for a while now, and he's so jazzed up. And he was a little bit terrified, but I think it's all coming together. And it's rare, you know, obviously, our schedules are very impacted, but I kind of kept the whole weekend open. Like, I'm not scheduling anything until I know exactly when and what is going down at Terra Madre. We have our tickets for the grand tasting on Friday evening. I just heard you do a radio spot yesterday talking about the pop-up bistro, so I'm going to be looking into that. But, you know, we pride ourselves as being the Farm to Fork Capital. Obviously, the larger Central Valley is really the breadbasket, certainly for the Western world. Right here in District 5, Zarnicoli Caviar, Passmore Farms, Van Vleek Beef, the Delta Pears. I mean, these are world-renowned things. Locally, sloughed house corn. And so I just am very excited for this. I think it's great that you signed a 10-year deal, and hopefully, it's going to last well beyond that, to have, you know, even years in Europe and odd years here. It's really amazing, so.
Thank you, Supervisor. Somebody made the point to me last night that New York has a lot of farmer's markets, too. And so I did a little research, and there are 30 commodities coming out of the ground in New York versus the 400 coming out of the ground in California. So that Farm to Fork Capital is an identity that we've earned.
Take that, New York.
Yeah.
All right. Supervisor Rodriguez.
Mike, I want to congratulate you on a fantastic bridge dinner. But I, you know, I moved to the area in 2006 from San Francisco, and I grew up in an area that had every kind of food that you can think of. And so when I moved up here, I went looking for those kinds of foods, and that's how I ended up a restaurant owner, is I wanted to bring a San Francisco-style chorya to the historic district and ventured out. And that's how, I mean, that's really how it happened. I left a 24-year career in healthcare to venture out. But let me tell you what I've seen in the last 10 years. I have seen Sacramento really change in the way that you can find the different kinds of foods and the delicacies. And it is really fun to come into the Sacramento and find so many fantastic restaurants and so many different types of foods that it is exciting to be able to host something like Terra Madre and also have individuals go out and support so many of these amazing restaurants. So congratulations on the work that you do. I really do, I appreciate it. I'm still a big-time foodie, and I really enjoy eating throughout Sacramento. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mike. Just want to pile on. Very excited about Terra Madre. And I just want to thank you because you have, you know, in your time and tenure at the Visitors Bureau and Visit Sacramento, you have really put a significant imprint on Sacramento in terms of its cultural sophistication with entertainment, art, and food. And you really have made a big difference in this county, in this region. So I just want to thank you. I'm happy to know you and look forward to more successes to come, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping donuts in our food conversation.
There you go.
By the way, there's a maple bar that's up for grabs.
Thank you again, Mike. And I know this was about Terra Madre, but we do have another event. I think it's the following weekend, is it not? What would that event be?
Aftershock, the largest hard rock show on the West Coast welcomes about 160,000 people over four days. It's a destination festival, especially in the sense that 65% of those attendees don't live in this region. Economic impact is about $35 million. So thanks again to this board for making sure that that always has a spot in Sacramento.
Thank you for plugging that as well.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay. All right. Those that I reminded who might want to stick around for a food item, I hope you enjoyed that because I'm very excited. I think we all are excited to see what comes of Terra Madre. So with that, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number five is a presentation by the Greater Sacramento Economic Council.
Okay. Who is teeing up this?
I was just thinking, I don't serve enough wine. Listen to Testa. So I kind of got to start throwing parties around here so somebody will like me. Well, listen, thank you for having me. So I know there's a presentation coming up. So as you know, you were a founding organization, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy, about 10 years ago when we decided, you know, could we build a more dynamic, I think, Pat, you were on Elk Grove, so you're a founder as well, too. We give Rich and Rosario a chance to redeem themselves at any point in time, though, I'll just say. But, you know, how do you drive a better economic model for the community where you can get leverage and greater opportunity? And, you know, we have just finished our first 10 years, and I think there's a great story about our community and about the rise of our region. So I'll go into this presentation. Someone is trusting me with a clicker. There you go.
Before you get into it?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Barry Broome, President and CEO of Greater Sacramento Economic Council, 2021 U Street. So I live in Midtown.
Very good.
So I just.
Otherwise known as District 1.
District 1, right. I rode my skateboard here, so I'm super hip. So I've been doing economic development for 35 years, you know, 26 as a CEO. I've been here now 10 years as the founding CEO of this organization. And, you know, we just, you know, if you look at communities that are really thriving, you know, people with money care about them. If you look at communities that are struggling, people with money don't care about them, right? I mean, it's kind of that simple. And so, you know, how do you get the CEOs in this community, you know, not to act as a special interest group or through a lobby or through an association? How do you get them to step out on their own? Right now, Mark Friedman's the Chairman of the Board of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and put some skin in the game and actually focus on their community. And then how do you get CEOs to be responsible for their community, right? That's really the trick because you're responsible for a community seven days a week, 24 hours a day. But what does the president of ESP do? Or what does, you know, the head of the Kings do for the community, other than operate important enterprises? And, you know, the goal is for the, you know, the CEOs are about 85% of the budget. The public's about 15% of the budget. But the goal is to really give the local communities a tool to work with that they otherwise couldn't produce on their own for the amount of resources that are available to them, right? It's like a, you know, cooperative service model, if you will. And then, of course, you know, how do you increase competitiveness, which is the efficiency at which we operate? A huge compliment to Crystal and David and the entire Sacramento County. If you look at our airport, right, I mean, everywhere you go, oh, you got the best airport in the country. I love your airport. I mean, even small communities are capable of doing big things if they work really hard and keep their head down. And then how's the economy sustainable and equitable, right? I mean, leaving communities of color behind, leaving your neighborhoods behind, not a great idea. Ignoring, you know, the threats to families, not a great idea. How do you avoid rerunning the 1-percenter model where all the money's going to the top and there's no economic opportunity for other people? And then how do we sustain ourselves? When we started in 2015, technically, the organization started in 2014. I was the CEO they hired, but, you know, we were the second worst place in the United States for a young person to find a job. We've all seen the rise of SacState from having the 8.5% graduation rate to becoming the university that it is today, along with our other great universities like UC Davis. But, you know, how does, how do we create an industry model here that's independent of the government? Because we know what kind of financial challenges the state of California has in all these public institutions. If that's a third of your economy, what's going to happen to you? You know, you're going to go downright with them. So you got to diversify away from that, build industries of the future. And we've had some success doing that. This is kind of the snapshot, so it sounds hard to believe, but it's true. The organization did get rated the number-one economic development organization in the world by the International Economic Development Council, and that cost us plenty. I'm joking. And, you know, historically, whoever buys the most ads win. I don't know if you know how that works, but jokingly, it's the first time in my career it's happened. I think it's a real statement about our board and our community. So, you know, that's the outcome. And if you look at the map, that's how America investment models look at us, you know. Like I always tell people, you know, Placer County does a great job, but Sacramento County runs the airport. You know, Eldorado Hills is doing some great things, but, you know, the city's got the downtown, right? All these things are fantastic, but the R1 University's in Davis. So if these assets aren't organized in a fundamental way and working together, then the communities can't elevate themselves. And then assets get distributed relatively then the communities can't elevate themselves. And then assets get distributed relatively evenly through the region. So there's a real return and, and, you know, clarity on, you know, what happens when you work well, what happens when you work well together, what happens when you become more efficient and productive, the overall economy rises, and everybody benefits from it. Like, Yuba County's one of the fastest-growing counties in America right now. Well, we know where Yuba County is getting their economy. They're getting their economy from Sacramento County. They're all driving in here for a job. We're going out and spending time in their gaming assets. So a community like that thrives because Sacramento County's thriving. So having them in a partnership is really good for them. So, you know, the most common thing we do on an outreach brand and marketing standpoint is work on our reputation. So the market reputation in our region is very good. You know, I think we have a hard time sometimes giving ourselves credit. Part of the humbleness of being a government town historically, but Sacramento's reputation and marketplace is very high. Our reputation isn't always very high inside California politics. Our reputation maybe isn't high sometimes in the minds of people in our community, but it's very high nationally. And, and I mean, like in Wall Street, the venture capital community, the LA investment markets. And then, you know, our goal is to have that reputation really high, so that when someone's making an investment, they source the Sacramento region as a place to invest. And we usually get an RFI, just like you would with an award, you know, and a consultant's on the other side of the RFI. And then our goal is to get into the top five for that. And then Crystal takes over with her team, or, you know, Mike Jasso at the City of Sacramento, wherever the company starts to gravitate, that gets handed off, and we move back to the front of the pipeline, working on market reputation, RFIs, and shortlists. So the final decision belongs to the community, and that's why we say all of our successes belong to the community, because, you know, it's the City of Sacramento that delivered the 9-0 vote on the stadium. I didn't deliver the 9-0 vote. I didn't deliver the EFID, right? But we were the ones that got Wilton Ranch Re to put the $200 million into the deal. But that doesn't mean anything if the council doesn't step up and and make a tough vote. So all the success belongs to the community, and all of our accomplishments belong to our board, because they're writing the checks and helping us. So I got some feedback, my team did. You know, what does Sacramento County do? You know, I always call there's the front end of an investment, and there's the back end of an investment. And, you know, if you look at Metro Air Park, you know, that's like a gold standard for an industrial property now, right? There's plenty of space, it's near the airport, it's off the freeway, it's got smud power, so it's uniquely advantaged. So when we have an industrial competition with another community, you know, we can offer a site within 90 days, which is unusual in California, right? It's unusual anywhere in the United States. But because of the work the Sac County did with the EFID and putting in the infrastructure, you know, that thing sat there since 1968 until the county stepped in and provided leadership. You know, now it's, you know, the most important industrial employment center probably in the six, seven, eight, nine, 10 county areas. But, you know, so when someone's interested, like in Orca Bio, we got a really great project right now that has focused on Metro Air Park. So now we've moved on. Crystal's now managing that deal for Sacramento County. So there's the front end, how does the company look at us? There's the brand, how do we change how people feel about us? There's the strategic piece, that's our competitiveness council, do we have enough venture funds, what are incentives look like? You know, how are we championing our airport? Are we helping the airport get direct flights to Germany and South Korea? And then there's the back end of the deal, which is what completes it. What's the experience once you engage the government? When you want to build? What's your permits like? What are the fees? What's the power cost? What are the infrastructure? And that's why we're a public-private partnership, because a CEO group can never deliver the final contribution to the success story. That has to be the public sector. And Sacramento County is humming on all cylinders. It's very impressive, the growth and leadership within the county, and I thank you for that. So one of the things, we don't like consultants. I'm sure there's a standing ovation occurring behind me. But, you know, so we rarely go to a consultant, because a lot of times a consultant brings you kind of a cookie cutter sort of project. This one's a little bit different. We made it part of our California Jobs First Initiative with Valley Vision, Sacramento County, and others, because we're now top five, you know, definitely top 10. We like to say we're in the top five in the semiconductor industry now for research. We have the top nine companies in the world here. It means five, six, seven years ago, we only had two. So imagine Intel having all these problems, and our semiconductor industry's going up. That's the power of doing the economic development work right with Solidigm and Rancho Cordova and Bosch. And now, you know, we have young semiconductor companies in Folsom that are really coming up. One of them that we've been working with just got $35 million from Sovereign Wealth Fund. That is almost impossible to do. So that'll be a really validating experience. So Newmark is the top semiconductor battery consultants in the world. So this will, report will come out to our board. David will see that this week. But it's going to be really granular in the semiconductor space versus, you know, what you typically see from an economic development, where we're chasing semiconductor deals, or we're trying to be in the semiconductor industry. Well, what is that? Is that silicon carbide chips? Because that's what Bosch controls. Are we doing memory technology? Because that's what Solidigm controls. So these guys are from the industry, and they're going to get us through the learning curve on the sophistication of the technology. And we're going to make a big bet in this space, because the industry's going to increase 800% in the next 15 years. So it's a booming industry. We've got a huge R&amp;D footprint, you know, and we've been shortlisted on some fabs. Those will be tough to get, but we might get one one day. And this is an example of us using a consultant, only because we've gotten so sophisticated in the space, it's kind of above our pay grade as generalists. And now we're deep enough into the gain to where we can afford to invest heavily into a professional consultant. And that plan will be executed. If you know anything about our organization, we execute everything. We don't write plans and let them sit on a shelf. This is what we always tell our communities, right? Every, you know, the average community gets about 48% of their jobs within their community and rely on other people. So for the City of Sacramento, you produce about 60% of the jobs for your residents. That means you need Folsom and Elk Grove and other communities to produce the other 40% of the economy for your stable. So it's a, just a clean data point on how dependent we are on each other. This is something that shows what happens when you have a collective action model together. You know, think of every single thing in this community working in the same direction and getting consistently better. That's really the story of the last 10 years here. And, you know, so, you know, it's always great to say, hey, you know, Google's coming downtown and buying two buildings, and those are always the dream. But if you look like what Elk Grove's doing, right? Elk Grove's an extremely well-run economic development town. You know, if you look at Folsom, you know, choose Folsom. So if you go over to Rancho, you know, Rancho's now super aggressive, put $5 million, you know. So it's all these things, you know, Woodlands building a research park, and now Davis is wanting to do more. And Plaster County's Plaster County, and West Sac has the Bridge District. So it's all these collective action models that really leads to it. But, but if you look at the GDP growth from 2006 and 14 to 2015 and 2023, I mean, it's remarkable how much more productive our economy has been. And it hasn't been a good time, right? We haven't had a friend in the White House. We closed the economy of COVID. It's not like we got the wind at our back. You know, the wind's in our face, and we're running into the wind, and we're making marked changes in our achievements. And I'm really proud of the community.
Barry, before you leave that slide, if you can go back.
And we may never go back again. And thank you for having me. No, no, no. All right. So somebody who's under 30 should probably take the clicker from me.
Can someone from our clerk's office help Mr. Broom?
Yeah. And somebody who went to high school, take this for me and help me. Thank you. There we go. And.
Makes it look so easy.
Yeah, you'd think it's just like to the right or left, but it could be trickier. There we go.
There you go. That's the one.
One more back. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. So I think most of us understand what GDP is. And so this is a chart that just shows percentage change in both GDP and productive, productivity growth. Can you explain generally, or basically what either Bureau of Economic Analysis or the Census Bureau is marking when they, when we look at productivity? How, what is the metric really? What's the unit of measure?
It can, it can, it's, it's a bundled metric, but like IP per thousand people.
Okay.
So let's just say UC Davis has gone to Aggie Square. They've been working on getting more commercially viable, so their IP activity goes up, their IP activity goes out the door. These little small startups in Folsom, they got a lot of IP activity. Obviously, Solidigm and Bosch have a lot of IP activity. So now this intellectual property, meaning they create novel discoveries that are recognized by the federal government, belong to them, they own it, and it has unique capabilities. So that would be an example. It could also be, you know, the change in graduation rates at Sac State from eight-and-a-half percent to 40.
Let's make sure we're clear about what you're saying when you say eight-and-a-half percent. I believe that's eight-and-a-half percent. That was the base for.
For four years.
For four years. That's an important part of.
Yeah, because it was 50 at six years.
Yeah, but it's, I just, as a, as a graduate of Sac State, and we have two others up here that also went, it's not that Sac State suffered an eight-and-a-half percent graduation rate, it was an eight-and-a-half percent graduation, graduation rate in four years.
Yeah, yeah. So now that's pushing 40. So that's a big productivity advantage, right? So we're capturing UC Davis grads. We used to keep 10%. It's now 40%. So that changes the STEM footprint in the market. So there's always varied things that go into that, that, that acknowledge that. But that's also the same data point that a centaur uses. So the key to this is a third of our work. I spend probably 20% of my time just on data, understanding it. But, you know, this is the same data that Google would look at, or that Apple would look at, or Andreessen Horowitz, or JP Morgan Chase, you know. So the data sets are common, and they're polled by industry. So when we make a statement like this, they're going to go, how'd you get so? That doesn't make sense. You know, what'd you guys do? Then you have the data set to prove it. And, and, you know, that solves the problem, right? This is when you're working through a reputation that you're building.
Great. Thank you.
So we tried to keep the check lean. Our governments get pushed hard for cost. We have a lot of external factors driving a cost. So when we started this, it's like, hey, here's the check, we're not going to change it for 10 years. Just stay consistent and put your resources in your own local economic development people, which people have done. And that's really what we recommend. Put more money into your local economic development leadership. And then this is really something that I'm really proud of. I'm going to talk a little bit about racial inclusion. So just like that productivity gain is an independent analysis that would be adopted and shared by UCLA Anderson or a centaur, you know, this is Brookings Monitor. And this was 2017, so this was two years after recovery. It's a shame we didn't have the 2014 data. But, you know, being dependent upon the government, being slow-moving, not having a trajectory, not having an outward focus, not driving an industry objective, you know, we just, we just scored poorly. And we brought in the Brookings Institute, because, you know, the, you know, we tend to be left-leaning as a community. The Brookings Institute is really the arm that advised Barack Obama, right, and Biden and others. So if you look at us now, you know, we're in the top 10 in the US in growth, top 20 in prosperity, seventh in inclusion, third in geographic inclusion. So that means like when I talk about Yuba County, or Elk Grove, or Folsom, you know, all the economic expansion isn't aggregating around the usual suspects, as you would say. You know, it's getting more diversified, and I think Woodlands is going to have a lot of excitement in their research park. And that's the value of all working together. And all those communities got more sophisticated. The racial inclusion data, I recommended that my staff keep this up there, but we have a rule, we don't keep negative data up. But in 2024, our racial inclusion data was 17. So we're the 28th US market. So if you're at 66, like, what are you at 66 when you're 28? So being 10, 27, 3, you're punching well above your weight. And then the racial inclusion, we were at 17, but it just goes to show you what happens when you start cutting public services to people, who gets affected by it. Yes, sir.
So these are kind of proprietary national standing numbers from Brookings Institution, correct? Okay, gotcha. All right.
Yeah. So, and the reason it's important is we're in front of a, you know, we go to New York and pitch Wall Street, people says, who? Baseball and what, right? That's the whole question. Well, Brookings Institute. Well, where'd you get that data? Same place you're getting data. You know, that's the exact same data set you're using before you put a huge bond into the market. So if our data's wrong, you should probably go back and redo your entire bond strategy, right? So a lot of this is like, a lot of people, you know, we're, think we're just talking to companies. We really spend most of our time talking to the consultant-advised companies. So if you were running a professional sports team, you know, you'd want to talk to the agent to sign the player. So how you're working with ENY, a centaur, Price Waterhouse, Mackenzie, you know, all those big groups, specialty groups, really important. And so this data kind of navigates through that. You know, the one thing we always set a goal for, this is your page county-wise, is, you know, you know, every time someone puts money in economic development, they should be paid back. If they put money in economic development, they're not paid back. They're not doing economic development, right? And they can put money into a cause, which is important, and they can put, and they can make a competitive investment, like a $10 million research fund that may take risks and not give a return. But whenever you're doing something, you ought to get paid back. So, you know, we've got about a 20 to 1 payback. And then these are some of the outcomes. And you've, by the way, Sacramento County is the top performing economic development shop in the region for responding to competitive situations. My EVP made sure I reminded you of that. And, you know, you're at all the meetings, you come to the board meetings, and now your economic development director is on the board. She was elected by the economic developers in the region. So what we do with the 22 economic developers is they select a person to lead them and represent them on the board. And Crystal, in very short order, and I'm sure you've seen her work, has gained the confidence of her peers. And then, you know, we're able to stretch things, right? I think, I think Korea was a really important mission, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coming with us. But like, you know, we're not like going on a junket, right? I mean, we've got Samsung and Solidigm and SK Hynix out of Korea. We now have a relationship between the Korean Research Universities and UC Davis, right? They're sending their startups into the US at UC Davis now. And same thing with Germany. And then coincide, we work with your airport on, you know, can we get a Lufthansa flight, right? So now we have all this German activity in the market, Mercedes-Benz, companies like that are kicking our tires all the time now. Can we get a direct flight from Lufthansa into Berlin or into Frankfurt, which aid and abets the interest of those markets. And so Seoul and, and maybe Berlin or Seoul and Frankfurt would be the two big international objectives, because now we have outward-facing companies that set the reputation for the town in those, like Bosch is Google in Germany, you know, and SK Hynix, which has $9 billion in the Solidigm, and Samsung. I mean, Samsung is, is the top company in the world in South Korea. So now they being here sends a message to the market, well, they're, if they're here, maybe we should be here, right? Maybe that's the place we should be following on. So those, those things all coordinate. This is just retaining Newmark so far. We've got some nice deal flowing. You're a finalist for this AI robotics manufacturing facility, $287 million. And our average wage is about $108,000. And then, of course, you know, we work closely with your airport. I mentioned that. A real gem and incredibly professional team. These are some key locates in the unincorporated area. I mean, Orca Bio, so a great example, like, like, to the average person, what's Orca Bio? It's 200 jobs sitting in Metro Air Park. Okay. So that's kind of cool. You know, what's to pay? $108,000 or $112,000? Okay, that's kind of cool. But what's really cool about it is Lightspeed Ventures is a $12 billion fund, and it's kind of the flagship technology forum. And they put $500 million into that company. See, now the chairman of the board of a $12 billion fund that's got their star asset in the middle of our town, and they're in Menlo Park, and guess what? They invest in a lot of companies. So now we make sure that company gets a great experience. That big fund in Menlo Park's like, great, we don't have to pay Silicon Valley prices anymore. We can build and develop the technology. We can drop them in the ground 72 miles away, pop up and see them. And everybody up there's looking after our assets and investments and treating us with, like a customer. So those kind of things, Rivian is in bigger conversations with us. So sometimes, you know, Marianne's, you know, baking is, you know, it's a nice local business, but it was good to keep. It wanted to, you know, leave the state, US Food, that was just one of our early investments. But some of these companies like Orcon Rivian, you know, so Rivian is now looking at possibly being the anchor tenant on the mobility center to do their battery technology here. So these large, larger companies have a chance to scale, and so does Incom. And as I mentioned before, all of our achievements belong to our community. And I'm grateful for the support. And I saw how you guys treated Testa, so I'm watching. Don't start, you know, gooing all over me just right off the bat.
Thank you, Barry. And again, I want to thank you for your tenure leading GSAC and for all the very productive activity that I think we've all witnessed during that time. And I've had a chance to work closely with you and your staff through our economic development department mostly, to see that, you know, key assets like Metro Air Park, like McClellan Business Park, like our airport, are all succeeding through the partnership that we enjoy with, with your organization. And I'm not sure I heard you toot your own horn, which. And I'm not sure I heard you toot your own horn, which is odd, because I
Well, that's because I saw how humility of Testa, you know? So I was going to come up here like, I just got here.
But has, did I, did I not hear? I thought GSAC has won some awards, or is it going to?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So International Economic Development Council named us the number one organization. We were actually in the top three for three years. You know, I'm really proud of that because these are Sacramento kids. If you looked at that, these are 30-year-old, 28-year-old kids that are doing this, and they're very fired up. Jasmine Ward, who is, you know, who is now considered, you know, a Sacramento native, you know, she's now really considered like the guru of how to market a community in the United States. And if she were like a film producer, she would have four Oscars and four, you know, Emmys. I mean, she's just a real star. So it's really been a joy, you know, working with these young people, you know? And if you look at our team, you know, they're diverse, they're young, they're energetic, they're very dedicated, you know, they're really committed, and I'm really proud of them.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have some more comments here. We'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Well, Barry, I was going to do some gratuitous gushing about you, but you said not to, so I won't. So thank you for the presentation and for the work you do. And I'm glad you had that specific slide on unincorporated Sacramento County because, because something that, you know, we talk about a lot up here is kind of the two hats we wear as a Sacramento County government. Obviously, the umbrella, the largest government entity really in Northern California, certainly in this region. But we also have where the hat as really the largest essentially city in the county because a third of the population in Sacramento County lives in unincorporated areas. And I had a question on the slide you had where it talked about the ROI 20 to 1. Was that for Sacramento County as a whole? That's what I'm assuming that was not.
Sacramento County, yeah.
That's the county as a whole, okay. Do you have that kind of, because I think to myself, we have to equate our unincorporated county population. We have to look at it and evaluate it, just like a city would be evaluating their population. Do you have that ROI for unincorporated Sacramento County? Or could you somehow
Yeah, I could bring that out for you.
I'd like to see that, because I want to see what that ROI is for these areas. And we, you mentioned at the beginning of your, at the beginning of the presentation, you know, the importance of not leaving any communities behind.
Right.
You know, and it makes me think about, again, the unincorporated communities in South SAC and Arden Arcade and Foote Hill Farms in North Highlands. These are environmental justice communities, you know?
Yeah.
Communities that have suffered, have been under resourced, have not had historically, I think, the attention they should be having, certainly not the attention in terms of economic investment and workforce development. And we're, and we're really doing a lot at the county to change that. But I want to know, is there, is there anything you can point to specifically at GSAC? Specific initiatives, strategies that are really directed at some of these, in particular, environmental justice communities?
Yeah.
And in the unincorporated area?
Yeah.
I just don't want them to get lost in this notion that Sacramento County is the big umbrella government.
Yeah, because everything's Folsom Rancho.
Right, right, right.
You know, the municipalities, they've got a bunch of infrastructure that are near the airport, off the freeway, doing great work. Yeah, so you know, one of the things that, well, I just want to go on, I probably shouldn't bring this up, but we did spend a million dollars on Measure U for neighborhood economic development. So I always rhyme people that, you know, we spent two years trying to build a separate independent apparatus to work exclusively in these underserved communities. And unfortunately, you know, financial conditions changed, and we didn't, we didn't get to do very well with, with the program. But one of the things I'm developing right now is something called Opportunity Sacramento. And it's really in response to the pushback on DEI, right? So I always tell people, you know, you don't need three letters to do the right things, right? So we're developing this thing called Opportunity Sacramento, and I'll probably need Sacramento County's help with it. But there's 5,000, and this is more like people than area, but we're looking at Del Paso Heights and South SAC, which have high concentrations of people being impacted. But just like in Sacramento County, there's 5,230 single parents, 95% women, that make $36,000 a year, that rely on the federal government for daycare. And you've seen these cuts, so you can imagine the sweat of the brow that we're feeling right now of these people get completely undermined for their daycare. And their daycare costs, you know, as we know, $25,000, $30,000 a year. You know, a lot of people, you know, you see that, you think, oh, what a shame. But you know, we went into Del Paso Heights, and we analyzed 150 of the moms, they're mostly moms, 5% are men. And you know, like 93% of them had a high school diploma. 15, 20% of them had a college degree. 50% of them had some college. Why are these women making $36,000 a year and hanging on by their fingernails? And then all I hear from major employers, well, I can't find good people, right? You hear that all the time. Get us good people, get us good people. So we've been working with Adenay Max Group, you know, if you know Adenay. And, and we've been spending a lot of time on it about a year, but we want to roll it out to where basically we get my board members to guarantee a one-year $65,000 in, you know, income to mothers that graduate from varied certification and technical training pieces. And so that's something that, I'm surprised it didn't get picked up like that. I think we have a really uncertain economy right now. But that would be an example of something that would specifically impact those residents to give them a ladder into the economy. Because, you know, we did a digital upskilling program, you might remember, during COVID. Same thing, Del Paso Heights, South SAC, you know, we had, we basically paid people to train them. And, you know, it was about to pay them $650 a week for 12 weeks, give them a computer, and give them a $2,500 bonus if they completed the certification. It was a Google IT certification, was about 50% of the cost of the training in, in our town for people on skills. And we had a very high placement rate, average wage around $50,000. We did this during COVID because, you know, we knew people were going to have to work from their home. So I mean, I see this opportunity Sacramento as a, as a big play. Also, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a former neighborhood economic developer. So I spent my first five or 10 years in neighborhoods in Cleveland. So I do know my way around these urban neighborhoods. And I always talk to folks, like I'm always available, you know? You know, I champion the Urban League, improve here tomorrow. So I try to support institutions that support those areas and use the standing of our board to help them. But I will sit down with you and give you a briefing on this opportunity.
And thank you for that information. I just, I just, you know, you think about the, you know, the unincorporated Delta communities in Rio Linda, Alberta, the South SAC, Arden Arcade, Carmichael. Instead of lumping them all together, where they kind of, I think their, their identity gets diluted a little bit, I think it would be important to, to make sure they're considered separately, their needs are considered separately.
Absolutely.
You know, just, it's a conceptual thing. And I think that's what our own economic development is working on that as well. So thank you, Barry.
Yeah, and digitally, you can get right down to the zip code in the house, right? So that's the beauty of the analytics we have. We can, you know, when, so you know, we watched Golden One. We were working with them on what they were doing in Del Paso Heights. And so we went to Golden One and said, you know, a million dollars, I can take 50 of these moms out of Del Paso Heights, pay them for a year to get trained, and then get one of my board members, give them a one-year internship. And what I'm trying to do with the board is de-risk participating in the program. Just give them a year internship, $65,000. And when they're trained to be paid, when they're paid to be trained, and they get a one-year internship, it doesn't affect their daycare benefit from the feds.
Great, let's do that in Foote Hill Farms and North Highlands.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Vice Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Barry, for all the work that you do. You know, I constantly remind people that us as policymakers, the issues that we deal with really are when we look at, you know, impacting and improving homelessness and improving roads. It really is about economic development because we want to attract great businesses to our area. So with that said, when you are out courting different types of organizations or industries, when they don't choose Sacramento region, what are some of the reasons?
It's usually cost, you know? I mean, California is an expensive state to do business. And even though our cost of lifestyle is manageable, like Reno's not inexpensive, right? So Reno's, you know, the cost of housing in Reno has exploded. It's probably even higher than Sacramento. We probably have a housing advantage over Reno. We have a talent advantage over Reno. As a matter of fact, Elk Grove was between us and Reno on that big semi truck deal that Musk did at Tesla. And I still think we have a shot at that. It's like 6,500 engineers. It was between Elk Grove and Reno. We spent eight hours with Tesla. It was almost impossible to get Tesla to believe that we had a better financial advantage over Reno because they just had the California cost model so trapped in their mind. But the cost of labor and the cost of housing quickly overruns the cost of government. But you know, the regulatory environment's tough on these guys, like battery deals. We got a bunch of battery deals here. Once they get in the ground, they go through the hurdles. It's just so much more affordable for them to be somewhere else, which is why a lot of, the beauty of something like an Orca Bio is it's pre-revenue, you know? It's 500 million in venture money, and these guys need scientists to solve their problems. So the science community in Sacramento is very high. They got a turnkey real estate experience in Sacramento County. So their, their, their cost model was different. So I think one of the things, like the governor's recent effort to modify SEQA for advanced manufacturing, those kind of things are going to be really helpful to us in the future. But it's, it's almost always cost. It's usually never anything else. You know, they're, they're pretty excited about the town.
Yeah, there's definitely a correlation between the affordability of an area and attracting businesses that have great paying jobs. And so I, you know, I support that. Okay, a question about office spaces and big box stores that are vacant. You know, at one point, we looked at the potential of creating some residential housing and then realized that it was too expensive to, to make the changes. Is the industry looking at anything to fill some of these? Because there are some areas within our county that have a higher vacancy rate in office space?
Yeah, I think, I think first off, I think like high-end Class A office is going to come back. See, if you have high-end space or unique space, like 400 Capital Mall would be, you know, a building people are familiar with, that's probably going to come back, 550, right? If you have B space, you know, like that's the challenge for Rancho, right? So Rancho's got a ton of B space, you know? We were able to get Solidigm to buy an office and spend $250 million converting it, you know, into a lab because of Rancho's work and SMUD's work. So I think one of the things that has to happen is there's going to have to be a different public incentive policy for the retrofitting of these office buildings for us to put them back in play. Because I think ultimately, they can become housing, and the housing value is very high to us as a community. But you're going to need to de-risk this. So I'm from the Midwest, you know, you might know. So you know, I was, I oversaw Toledo, Ohio's downtown. I always like to say, I had all the great jobs. But like, you know, we converted all those empty spaces because we had big federal and state tax incentives to help developers go in and buy empty spaces and put them back into use. And I think we're going to need a different state policy to bring those offices back.
What about those big box stores? You know, I drive home and I see Bex, you know, Bex is going out of business. That is a huge space. But there's also been big box stores within shopping malls that have not been filled. Any idea of what the plan is for the future with some of these locations?
Well, historically, those got converted to office, you know? So that's the challenge, you know? A big box store converted to a back office employment center was historically how those got reused. But I don't really, the only thing I could say is if they have unique power. So power is becoming so important, like we're, PG&E is becoming competitive here because they have power. So having power versus not having power. So I think if some of those box stores have unique, and by the way, the follow-up to the Newmark proposal is the Brattle Group's going to come in after that and really micro-assess what is the power infrastructure of SMUD, PG&E, and Roseville in this town? And how do you get 5, 10, 15, 25 megawatts to a spot? So I think, I think there could be a power solution in those box stores.
What's a, what is the plan for the old Macy's, for Dino?
Well, they have a really wealthy tribe. Oh, hey, it happened. No, I think, you know, I think obviously, I, you know, they're on our board. So Shingle Springs is on our board. I think it can be a really spectacular, you know, I'd like to see it almost like a five-star convention hotel. So that's what we've been encouraging them to think about. And so in a project like that, that's not business location, but we'll consult on it. And we may source a hotel developer to partner with them, and we may source money for them. So that's an example where GSAC will have a service on that, but not like you would traditionally landing an Orca Bio.
Okay, just a couple more questions. What industry are we courting right now that we don't have in the region? Or is there an industry?
Well, I would say, I mean, I think, I think, I think if you think about materials and engineering, you know, I mean, I think we have a footprint in the battery and storage sector. LeCap, a great example, a Sacramento County company that might be the most admired company in the world when we're done. But that's why the mobility center was so, you know, we've been having a hard time getting. So we have to create a value proposition, but I do think battery storage and battery technology can be a big industry here. We obviously want to scale semiconductor. I think that could double and triple in size in the next 10 years. And then, you know, what is the relationship between food ag and human health science? And that's sort of still gray. But you know, we're involved in a lot of strategies on that with UCA and R, which has a project called The Plant in the Market. That's pretty exciting.
Well, I thank you for all the work that you do. I'm, I'm really excited that I will be working with our economic development team, who I know works with you guys. But to really look at two areas in District Four that the community is really hungry for some changes and some improvements. And it is exciting to work with them. We're going to start off with a business walk and then meet with the communities about what we can do to enhance some of these areas. So anyways, thank you for all the work you do. Thanks.
Supervisor Keem.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Barry, kudos for being named number one economic development organization in the world. Belated congratulations to your mom for forming that council. Barry is the best economic developer in the world, according to Barry's mom.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's interesting. I share your praise for Crystal and her shop. I share your praise for Department of Airports. As you know, we're undergoing a culture change here at the organization. We want to be the best place to do business within Sacramento County, as Sacramento County. But it is a regional effort, and there's a lot about this region. And you hit the nail on the head that we're trying to keep people from going over the Sierra Nevadas.
Yeah.
Wherever they land, as long as they stay here, that's a good thing. And really, we are becoming, I think, a more and more promising welcome mat for this region, for folks that maybe the corporate office is still down in San Francisco, but their workers get a better life up here in the valley. And, and you know, you are in charge of determining which lure to put on the end of the line. And as a region, we set the hook, and then it's up to each individual agency, really, to get the fish in the net.
Yes, sir.
And so that's where the rubber meets the road. And you know, one of the things that I know we're focused on is when you're looking at culture change and you say, well, we want to have better morale so that we're more professional, outward facing, so that people feel better about the work that they do. By the time that message trickles down through the telephone game to the frontline folks, oftentimes like, hey, the boss says you need to smile more. You know, and the intent of what we're doing gets lost. And so to the extent we can pour in and collaborate with you, please let us know. And then I would be remiss if I didn't hype the fact that we have a second major airport within the Sacramento Airport system. And we're undergoing a strategic plan for that and a visioning process that, you know, to the extent you can weigh in on that would really be helpful. Because I think we will get to the point in short order where that will become an important economic driver as well.
Yeah, we're always available as needed. You know, we spend a lot of time with the airport. And so, you know, part of, part of what we're offering, you know, like if you've worked with Trolls, you know how talented he is? Matt Miller, you know, he was the chief economist in Arizona, was president of Greater Portland. So you know, we kind of built a team around a bunch of veterans and a bunch of young Sacramentoans. The young Sacramentoans are now rising and shining so that they're experts from their exposure to Trolls and Matt, and maybe me, but they're from here, so they're going to be sticky and be long-term Sacramento leaders. So we do have, we do have some unique expertise in the organization. And, you know, we're always interested in being tapped in an advisory role where we can be helpful.
Thank you. All right, thanks again, Barry, for the presentation and all your, your great work. Look forward to seeing you back maybe in a year's time, if not sooner, to hear about even more fruit of your labor and that of your staff and the partnership that we enjoy through our Economic Development Department.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signing up to speak on this matter?
We do not, Chair.
All right, very good. Then I believe, Madam Clerk, we are going to go back to our timed items, starting with item 59?
That is correct.
Okay.
Item number 59 is PLMP 2022-00106 Sapphire Subdivision. It's a specific plan amendment, rezone tentative subdivision map, and design review for a property located at 9836 Florin Road east of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community.
All right. Good morning once again. Emma Patton, Senior Planner, also joined once again by Christopher Albert, Associate Planner, Project Manager for the Sapphire Project. This project is very similar in a lot of ways to the Emerald subdivision, so I'll be brief in my notes, but happy to expand if needed. Here we see the project site, bound in red, within the context of the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Project. That's Site 21. Similar to the Emerald project, the applicant is requesting a specific plan amendment, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and a design review. Here we can see the specific plan amendment exhibit. The specific plan amendment would convert a 28-acre portion of the site from that single-family residential 3 through 5 designation to single-family residential 4 through 7, allowing for higher-density, single-family residential uses in that area. The proposed rezone would align with the specific plan amendment land use designations as shown here. Here we see the proposed subdivision. The 41-acre site would be divided into 207 single-family residential lots, along with several landscape lots and water quality lots. While no park site is provided on the Sapphire subdivision, they would have access to park sites on neighboring subdivisions to the east. Then the project qualifies for a notice of exemption due to its consistency with the adopted specific plan. However, project-specific mitigation have been developed to address environmental impacts identified in the specific plan's environmental impact report. The project has been reviewed by several advisory bodies. The Vineyard CPAC met on November 14th, 2024. Unfortunately, no members were present, so no vote was recorded. The DRAC reviewed the project on September 26th, 2024, and found it consistent with the countywide design guidelines and recommends that the board do the same. The Planning Commission met on August 11th, 2025, and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the entitlements. So staff has found that the project is consistent with both the general plan and specific plan policies, that the project complies with applicable standards, and is conditioned accordingly, that the project is supported by both the Planning Commission and the DRAC. And based on that analysis, today, staff is recommending that the board recognize the project, a project's exempt status under CEQA, adopt the MMRP, approve the specific plan amendment, approve the rezone, approve the tentative subdivision map, and finally find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. That concludes my comments and happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Emma. Any questions for staff? I see none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone from the public sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not.
Okay, bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'd move staff for recommendation.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconds. Please vote.
That item passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 60 is the PLMP 2023-00054. This is the Vang Property Rezone and Parcel Map, a rezone tentative parcel map and design review for two lots located north of the intersection of Dillard Road and Sherman Lane in the Casumnes community. The applicant is the Vang family, APN 134-0333-011 and 025.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Leanne Mueller with Planning and Environmental Review. Also with us today is Nate Dobronak, the Associate Planner and Project Manager for this project. The project before you is the Vang Property Rezone and Parcel Map. It was continued from the August 5th board hearing at the request of the applicant. The project site is two parcels totaling 20 acres. It's located in the southeast community and is specifically in the Wildon area. The parcels are currently vacant, and they have frontage on both Sherman Lane and Dillard Road. The general plan designation for these parcels is currently agricultural residential, and the southeast area plan identifies these as agricultural residential five-acre minimum parcel size. However, the current zoning is agricultural 80-acre minimum parcel size, which is why the rezone aspect is in front of the board today. And they are proposing to rezone to agricultural residential five, consistent with both the general plan and the zoning code. So as I've said, the entitlement is a rezone of those parcels from Ag 80 to AR 5. And in order to facilitate the tentative parcel map, which is going to be dividing those two parcels into approximately four parcels of five acres each, and then it's also a design review for consistency with our design guidelines. So again, rezoning from Ag 80 to AR 5 to provide consistency. This is the tentative parcel map. It's going to be four parcels. Two of those parcels are going to take access from Sherman Lane, that's Parcels 1 and 2, and then Parcels 3 and 4 are going to front and take access from Dillard Road. Previously, both Parcels 3 and 4 had separate driveways from Dillard Road. However, it was continued and the applicant has gone back and redesigned. And now, as shown in the revised exhibits in your packet, Parcels 3 and 4, while they will still maintain physical frontage, they will have one driveway on Parcel 4, and both Parcel 3 and 4 are going to take access off of that driveway. So this change was reviewed by both the Department of Transportation and the Casumnes Fire Department. The Fire Department did modify their conditions of approval, and so now condition of approval number 41 and 43 do address those revised driveway locations. So staff did prepare a mitigated negative declaration for this project. It was released for a 30-day review. The key topics that were analyzed were groundwater, Swenson Hawk foraging habitat, and native trees. And then it did also discuss mitigation measures. And the proposed mitigation measures are going to be for biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and tribal and cultural resources.
Excuse the interruption.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Rodriguez has a question.
Can you go back to the map? I just had a question about the driveway.
Yes, of course.
So in this situation, Parcel 4 will be the owner of the driveway that will be utilized by Parcel 3.
Yes, but generally what happens is when the maps are recorded, there will be an access easement that will be recorded over that, which will guarantee Parcel 3 will continue to have access across Parcel 4.
Got it. Okay. Because I just, what came to mind was, so they get into an argument, and then 4 wants to close off, and then how does 3, at that point, maneuver?
Yeah, so that does potentially happen. So in order to make sure that doesn't happen, usually what happens is we'll condition them, and we'll condition them that they have to grant access.
Got it.
And it's a legal-deeded access.
Thank you.
Okay, so this project was also reviewed by several advisory committees. It was reviewed by the Agricultural Advisory Committee. They recommended approval. The Design Review Advisory Committee did look at the lotting layout, and they recommended that the board find it in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. It went to the Casumnes CPAC. There was not a quorum, so no vote was taken, but the item was discussed. And then it went to our Planning Commission, and they also recommended that the board approve this project. So again, the items before you are a rezone from the Ag 80 to the AR 5 so that it is consistent with the general plan and community plan. This facilitates the land division, which the applicant is proposing to divide that 20 acres into the four acres of approximately five acres each. This is consistent with the surrounding land uses in the area. And then we do have a CEQA document, and with the implementation of the mitigation measures, there are no significant environmental concerns. When the revised driveway location was proposed, the CEQA document was looked at again, and it is still consistent as it was written by staff. Therefore, Planning and Environmental Review Staff is recommending that the board find that the project is consistent with the Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines, and that you adopt the mitigative negative declaration, that you approve the rezone of that 20 acres from Ag 80 to AR 5, that you approve the tentative parcel map to divide it into four parcels of approximately five acres each. You can find, you find that it is in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. I can answer any questions you may have. And then the applicant and the property owner are also here if you have any questions of them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to address the board?
Good morning, Chair. Sir and members of the board. Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing the Vang family. First thing I'd like to do is thank our, our planner, Mr. Dobronak, for ushering us through the process. I really appreciate all of his help. We have read the staff report, and we have agreed with all the conditions of approval and are here for your questions. I do have a map that shows in green the driveways, and the green portion is actually the portion that the Fire Department wants to have paved. And then as you get closer to the house, as long as you're within 150 feet, they can use gravel for the driveway, which is pretty typical for what we have out here in this neighborhood. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Holloway?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to address the board on this matter?
We do not, Chair.
All right, bring it back to the board. I see Supervisor Hume is in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank the applicant and the applicant's representative for being proactive and pulling this for greater discussion based off of comments that I made last time it was on the agenda. This is better because it does combine those two driveways into one, but it's not technically what I was asking for. And so I don't know if we need to have some sort of policy in place or something to that effect. But for me, I think it makes better planning sense that where a parcel fronts a major thoroughfare arterial and then a minor collector, all driveways should come off that minor collector. And so in reality, the easement should have run straight down the middle of Parcels 1 and 2 to serve Parcels 3 and 4. So as we do these types of lot splits in the future, I would like us to kind of keep that in the back of the mind so that the, the planner and the applicant doesn't get all the way to this point and then be asked to make engineering changes and incur extra expense. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Oh, I...
I don't know what you...
Did you want to say anything else?
Okay. Okay, yeah. No, I mean, this is better than it was, but it's still not quite what I was asking for, but, but I do appreciate that. And then the other thing that I would just like to put on my colleagues' radar is that we have a prohibition on AR 2 in our general plan, except for one place in the county, and that's west of, of Galt. And I have a lot of property owners who are adjacent, as this parcel is, if you saw the zoning exhibit, right across Dillard Road, AR 2 designation. And a lot of people coming forward wanting to go to a two-acre designation, either to keep the property in their family, they have children that want to move back to the area, and they're trying to do their estate planning or whatever else. And/or they just see like, hey, you know, it's literally right across the street from us, and we prohibit in our general plan. So I would like to think at some point in the future, we may look at coming back and revisiting that. We can put conditions that it has to be within proximity of other AR 2 parcels, that the originating parcel can't be of a larger size or whatever. But for me, an AR 5 is a very land-intensive use that doesn't necessarily get the end user any more of a desirable parcel than what an AR 2 designation would be. I know that was contentious when this was put into the general plan. It would probably have to be a fairly targeted amendment, you know, if we were to pursue that. But I'm just saying, this is something that is definitely bubbling up. And I think from a compactness of land use standpoint, you get sort of what the market is demanding with a more efficient solution with an AR 2 in, in certain circumstances. And so if there's a willingness to explore that, I'd like to maybe come back and look at that. But that has nothing to do with today's ask, and so I would go ahead and move staff's recommendation.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That item does pass unanimously.
All right, very good. And for our next item, I understand you need to, Madam Clerk, you need to swear in?
That is correct.
Anyone who wishes to address the board?
Yes, so I will read the item in the record and then ask those that would like to address the board about item number 61. We'll administer the oath. So item number 61 is PLMP 2024-00062. It is 4600 Auburn Boulevard, Boulevard Rezone. It's a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, and rezone for a property located at 4600 Auburn Boulevard, it's approximately 208 feet northeast of the intersection of Pasadena Avenue and Auburn Boulevard in the Foothill Farms community. The applicant is Tower Development Corp., APN 2400062-034. This item was continued by this board from the meeting of August the 20th, 2025. So at this time, I would ask anyone in the audience, if you wish to address the board, about item number 61. If you could please stand to be sworn. Okay. And if you could please raise your right hand in the appropriate... Okay. And please raise your right hand in the appropriate response to this question is I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give the board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you swear affirm? So when you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn.
Good morning, Chair. Sir and members of the board. My name is Christian Balthazar. I'm an Associate Planner with Planning Environmental Review and was the assigned planner for the 4600 Auburn Boulevard Rezone. The subject site itself is located at 4600 Auburn Boulevard in the Foothill Farms community. The project site consists of a singular parcel totaling 3.59 acres and is currently vacant. The site currently is accessed from the west off of Auburn Boulevard. In addition, surrounding uses include commercial retail buildings to the north, warehouses to the west, single-family residential to the east, and a combination of vacant lots and warehouses to the south. On screen now, we have the land use designation and zoning for the parcel. The subject site has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential, as well as a community plan designation and zoning of residential density 30, or RD 30. And the site itself is surrounded by general commercial in all directions, with exception to the east, which has a property zoned RD 10. In 2005, a pre-application meeting occurred for this site to discuss the feasibility of a multifamily project. Following this meeting, an official application was submitted. So on November 8th, 2005, Planning and Community Development Department approved a development plan review and affordable housing plan for the construction of a 48-unit multifamily residential project. However, no subsequent construction of the project occurred on this site. In addition, on January 31st of this year, an application for a nondiscretionary design review was submitted for the, from the project applicant to develop a self-storage on the two south-adjacent parcels to the site. The two parcels are landlocked and are zoned general commercial. This request proposes the development of an access road through this entitlement's project parcel, and the nondiscretionary design review is currently in process. However, a determination will not be issued until the subject project has been heard and a final determination has been made. The site plan for this request has also been included as attachment to your hearing packets. Lastly, staff did review recent code enforcement violations and has concluded that there are no active cases. The entitlement request is a general plan amendment to change the existing low-density residential land use designation to the proposed commercial office land use designation, a community plan amendment to change the existing RD 30 land use designation to general commercial, or GC, and a rezone similarly to change that RD 30 zoning district to GC. On screen now, we have the proposed general plan amendment, just showing that proposed change. And here we also have the community plan amendment and rezone exhibit also showing the proposed change. Currently, there is no development proposed for this main parcel. However, the applicant has stated that the site would likely be developed as a commercial center, offering units for lease. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project and was released for review on May 19th of this year. The document discussed the topics listed on this slide and concluded that the project would result in less than significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. This project was also reviewed by the former Carmichael Old Foothill Farm CPAC, now just the Carmichael CPAC, on July 10th of 2024, to hear and consider the project. A total of four members of the public did find, or did provide public comments, which included concerns that if the site was goned to general commercial, the applicant would propose to lease the site to wireless communication facilities, concerns that a masonry wall would need to be placed on the property boundary, causing negative visual impacts, and concerns that oak trees near property lines would need to be removed, as well as concerns that the owner did not have established plans for development. In response to this, staff did state that a use permit is required for all wireless communication facilities. So if the applicant decides to lease the site for a wireless communication facility use, a discretionary review that requires review by the CPAC would subsequently be needed for, for that to happen. Additionally, staff also explained that while it is Planning Department's preference to have applicants submit full development plans, it is not a requirement for them to have that. Staff also did, however, ask the applicant team during the project's application completeness review if there are, or if there was a protected use for the site. And as previously mentioned, the applicant did state that the site would likely be developed as a commercial center with units for lease. likely be developed as a commercial center with units for lease. Following deliberation, CPAC voted unanimously to recommend the board approve the requested entitlements. In addition to that, the Planning Commission also met on June 23rd of this year to consider the proposed project. Commissioners did not require a presentation from staff, and they did not have any questions or comments for staff or the applicant. Additionally, there were no public comments made during this meeting, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the board's approval of the project. Following staff's review, it was determined that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, the community plan, and the zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning, surrounding land uses, and does not conflict with the provisions outlined in Senate Bill 330. The environmental document concluded that there are no significant impact or environmental concerns with implementation of the mitigation measures, and the project was both supported by CPAC and the Planning Commission. With this said, Planning Environmental Review staff recommends the board supervisors take the following actions: determine that the environmental analysis prepared under CEQA is adequate and complete, and adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve a resolution authorizing the general plan amendment, approve a resolution authorizing a community plan amendment, and adopt an ordinance authorizing the rezon. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. I am available to answer any questions. We do also have the applicant team in person to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Christian, for the presentation. Could you just flesh out a little bit the conversation that we had around the housing inventory and the implications for the county's housing inventory with this site? Because there were some concerns initially that if we took this, rezoned this property, it would remove some units that we identified.
Right. As initially mentioned, there is no set plans for development for this site just yet. So staff took two approaches. First, which is although the site has been requested to be rezoned from RD 30, which allows 30 dwelling units per acre, the general commercial zoning district does also allow for higher density development of multifamily projects with a minimum of 20 dwelling units per acre, up to 30 dwelling units per acre. We do also have land use element 5 or land use element policy 5 that does state that for developments of 10 units or more, 75% or more of the required density should be built. And so through that, we were able to determine that in the future, if the site were to be developed with multifamily, we wouldn't be downsizing the requirement. In addition to that, we did acknowledge that the site itself would not be, or had the potential of not being developed as multifamily. And so we did do a no-net-loss analysis to ensure that there is sufficient buffer and the low inventory vacant land. And it was determined that there is a buffer and there is enough surplus for lower income category units available throughout the county.
Okay, great. That was the last point. It was the one I'm glad that you mentioned. Thank you, Christian.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do not.
Move approval.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. All right, our next item, please.
Item number 63 is County Executive comments.
No comments tonight. Thank you.
All right, very good. We have a couple of my colleagues in the queue for supervisor comments, I assume. And then I know we do have an adjournment in memory as well. So we'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Recently had conversations with our staff and others about the realization that, first of all, we all know that part of the reason that we have tiny homes and we have the shelter system that we've built up is because so many people who are living on the streets are afflicted with either drug or alcohol or mental illness issues or all three. And you can't help people when they're living on the streets to get clean and sober. It just won't happen. So what we've done here is by creating over 300 tiny homes now, with another 250 to come online here in the next year, an opportunity to get people off of the streets who need that help, stabilize them, get them in, you know, some kind of shelter and stabilize safe, dignified housing in order to provide them with the services they need. So, long backdrop for, I think that we are now reaching the capacity level of our shelter systems and the tiny home systems, that we should look at this a little bit differently. Stockton Boulevard's newest site is an example where we're finding over 80% of the people who are in there are suffering from significant mental health or drug and alcohol addiction problems. And here we are, we have them now stabilized, we have them in shelter, we know where they are, and they're here obviously accepting services or they wouldn't be there. So I'd like to look at doing a pilot program. I'd like it to start at Stockton because it's a unique situation in which we're pulling off the WX freeway site, which has traditionally and historically been one of the hardest to serve populations and most resistant to services. But we, that site is being heavily populated. And again, as I said, over 80% of the people, in our estimation, are currently seeing these issues. So I'd like to see a pilot in which we look at utilizing our, the tiny homes and other areas in which we are sheltering folks as a more of kind of an inpatient outpatient, whichever way you want to look at it, service in order to provide those services onsite in a much more intensive way than we have in the past, and take advantage of the fact that these are people who need help and are in a place where we can provide that help. So it would, it would be a shift to really focusing, and I think if we do a pilot first, you know, working with the state, we might be able to find some resources, because I think that something like this would be unique and something that other areas in the country would look at as a model. So I just wanted to give that direction to County Executive.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. We'll definitely look into that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Supervisor Kennedy? Because I think what he proposes is interesting. I want to understand it better. Would the idea be a pilot at the existing tiny home community on Stockton?
Well, for that particular site, but not saying limit it just to that, but if, you know, sometimes these things are easier to stand up if you do the pilot and start small.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be it. And that particular one, and I'm, you know, don't want to get into the legal easier, but that particular one lends itself to, for example, a partnership with WellSpace, since it's on their property, you know, and that's what they do. So, yeah.
Okay. I just want to understand the geography that you were talking about a little bit better. And then the inpatient outpatient part of it is specific to the kind of the behavioral health angle?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. A great suggestion. I would wholeheartedly support Supervisor Kennedy in directing the CEO and his team to explore that further. Supervisor Desmond?
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Supervisor Kennedy. So I've had a few discussions with Troy and Dave and Barry Chamberlain at Code Enforcement about the big issue we have in some of these unincorporated communities with chronically vacant buildings, particularly along commercial corridors, and especially ones that are really sources of blight, sources of a disproportionate amount of code enforcement activity, neighborhood complaints. We've heard of actually some people complaining in chambers about some of these properties. So I asked staff to look around and see what other jurisdictions are doing to try to alleviate some of these concerns. I know some, an extreme thought is imposing some kind of vacancy tax. I think that's far above and beyond something that I would ever consider. But there are some ideas out there, and some jurisdictions use what's really kind of called, I guess, for lack of a better term, a vacant building registry, where a local person is identified, and if it's a landlord with a vacant building or a building that is disproportionately causing code enforcement-related issues, they have to do certain things with code enforcement to make sure someone is available to address these issues. So I'd like to have continued discussions with staff about that, and at some point have staff bring back to the board a proposal on something we considered, could consider in unincorporated Sacramento County. And I think this is, again, one of these things that really, it dovetails with our community development review efforts, our community development reform efforts that we're undergoing, and other investments in unincorporated areas. How do we get people to come invest in some of these communities? And we have to deal with some of these blighted properties. Oftentimes, it's out-of-town, out-of-state, out-of-country landlords who have let properties sit for, in some cases, decades without doing anything. And these properties have been a problem. So I'd like to have a discussion about that at the board for some things we can do to help alleviate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I know we've made some progress on that. I think we need to do some comparables to some other places and bring something back to you. So we will do that.
All right, very good. Any other comments from board members? All right. If not, I know Vice Chair Rodriguez has an adjournment.
I do. I want to adjourn this meeting today in honor of Larry Ramirez, a man whose journey reminds us of the power of resilience, courage, and the second chances. Larry faced challenges that could have defined him: addiction, homelessness, and hardship. But instead, he chose to rebuild his life and give back to others. Through his work with SACNAV and the Florin Road Partnership, he became a valued team member, contributing to the renewal of our community and inspiring those around him. He will be remembered for his generous spirit and the unmistakable smile that reflected his hope for the future. Tragically, Larry's life ended the same evening that SACNAV was recognized as a 2025 nonprofit of distinction, an honor that spoke not only to the organization's mission, but also to Larry's own transformation and achievements. His story reminds us why it is so important to support programs that create pathways to recovery and renewal. On behalf of the board's supervisors, we adjourn in his name, grateful for the life he lived, the example he set, and the hope he leaves behind for all of us.
All right, very good. Do you have the name again?
Oh, Larry Ramirez.
So we will adjourn in memory of Larry Ramirez.
Thank you.